Vice President Tuttino?
Present.
President Griffin?
Here.
Councilmember Sokolaski?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Flanagan?
Here.
Councilmember Stokely?
Here.
Councilmember Leonard?
Here.
Mayor Robert Frost?
Here.
Do we have prayer, Pastor?
Can you raise please? Oh divine master in deep humility, we place ourselves, our thoughts and our plans in thy hands. We beg thee to fill our minds and our wills with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge and piety. Help us not to think of self or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us to promote as far as possible the welfare of our people and to treat them with impartiality and justice. Grant us the power to set a good example in thought, word and deed, so that thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people we represent. Amen.
To the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we do one thing before we sit down?
Yeah.
Can we take a moment of silence for Gary DiMedio? He passed away about three or four weeks suddenly and he was a great person for Conshohocken. He cared awful lot about it and he did a lot of things for us and council and the community. Thank you.
We had executive meeting before this meeting with legal matters and from there on we'll go with a presentation.
At this time if I could please have Ms. Friar and Mr. Hebner come to the podium. Mr. Mayor Frost, if you could present the proclamation to the Colonial Neighborhood Council in honor of their 50 years of service to the borough and Councilmember Sokolaski.
This is a proclamation to honor the Colonial Neighborhood Council's 50 years of service to the borough of Conshohocken. Whereas the borough of Conshohocken salutes and honors the Colonial Neighborhood Council for their dedicated services and outstanding presence in the borough of Conshohocken for the last 50 years. Whereas on June 22nd, 1967, the CNC was founded and formed by 40 members from the community. During that time, the CNC launched two programs to address poverty and education in Conshohocken. The CNC was born following President Lyndon B. Johnson's declaration of the war on poverty in the mid 1960s. And whereas since 1967, the CNC has endeavored to assist all deserving residents with emergency aid, referral services, Meals on Wheels programs, surplus food distribution, food cover, teachers and programs, and the distribution of food and gifts during the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. I do it all. Early on, the CNC created a health clinic in alignment with the Visiting Nurses Association. They also created a teacher assistant program in 1973 called the Head Start Program, which served children who needed extra one-on-one education. And whereas in 1971, a tragic gas line explosion and fire happened in West Conshohocken, leaving dozens of residents homeless, and the CNC organized a relief effort that aided many of the victims. At one time, the CNC served over 500 families who were in need of help. And whereas today, the CNC is most notable for their Meals on Wheels program, where volunteers dedicate their time to cook breakfast, lunch and dinner, package the food and deliver it to residents who are in need. During the course of a year, the CNC receives a large amount of food that goes directly back to families and residents in Conshohocken and surrounding vicinity. In addition, they have a thrift store called The Well, which was established in 1969, where residents can find affordable clothing and household articles. The CNC was and is now entirely staffed and operated by volunteers. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the borough of Conshohocken salutes and honors the Colonial Neighborhood Council for their 50 years of service to the Conshohocken community, this 21st day of June 2017 by the Borough of Conshohocken Council. Congratulations.
Back up. Hands on one side. Mayor Frost on the other. Back up a little bit more, son. There you go. We can put that in the middle so everybody can let them hold. You guys can move. Okay, guys. Here we go. Guys, good?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Everybody certainly is invited tomorrow. Sam, do you want to tell everyone?
Okay, we're on 4th Avenue. On 4th Avenue. Four to eight. I think we're going from Harry Street on down to like the apartments on East 4th. So.
There's food, there's meals.
Oh gosh, there's tons of food.
You'll get there before the United States chart is dead?
Tomorrow.
Definitely do that. Thank you. I want to thank council and everyone. This is an honor to serve on this, but it's a sense of community. It would not be possible without the support of the community. That food is generously donated. The volunteers for Meals on Wheels, 60, 80 volunteers a year required.
Yeah.
And the number of families served is still, in spite of the economy and everything you think today, is there's several hundred families and children that are part of it. It would not be possible without the support of the community. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Without a bunch of more food tomorrow night, we'll pass out to whoever comes. I'm sure it'll be collector's items, it'll probably be the only thing for Congress maybe. There's a limited supply here.
And it is a public event, so.
That's right. Come on over. And if you got any food you want to bring?
And everyone.
Any food? They can bring it with them tomorrow night, right?
Always.
Bring back to.
Anything.
Absolutely.
It's a free world tomorrow.
Mr. Cole, would like to thank you for the history that you provided and drafting that proclamation, so thank you.
Guys are doing a good job. You have to do work.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Mayor Frost and Councilwoman Sokolaski, thank you for spearheading that as well.
Okay, I'll turn it over to you, Steph.
Items on the consent agenda, to go through each one of them briefly. Approve and adopt the May 3rd and May 17 meeting minutes. Accept the May ending treasurer's report and accounts payable. Approve the waiver of off-street parking for 4 East 1st Avenue. Support the zoning hearing board application for 345 East 8th Avenue. Support the zoning hearing board application for 130 West 5th Avenue. Approve the formulation of a fire services agreement. Approve the auction of an Inferno fire truck through Minnissibid. Approve park mobile implementation and adopt ordinance number 2017-06, traffic ordinance amendment. Award the CDBG curb ramp project contract. Approve Resolution 2017-11, real estate certification checklist. Ratify the engagement of Obermeyer relative to Seven Tower Bridge foreclosure. Approve Resolution 2017-12, approving certain supplemental appropriations to the fiscal year 2017 annual budget. And approve the formation of a Friends of Mary H. Wood Park Fund. If so moved, I would just need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Any questions from anybody?
Nope.
Anybody got any questions or anything?
So, moving on to unfinished business.
For considering the appointment of the Dog Park Advisory Committee, we will have been finishing up the interviews for that position next week and we will report on following.
Okay.
So you can strike that one for now.
Strike that for now from the agenda with the notification that we will be notifying those members from the committee at the conclusion of this week to set up interview dates for appointment the next scheduled meeting if we can get the interviews completed. Okay. The next two items in unfinished business are housekeeping items in terms of the movement of the cash management to Fulton Bank in order to open and operate the money market in both the checking accounts. We need to approve a resolution to do that with signatures from the president, vice president and the interim borough manager. So item B is to approve the Resolution 2017-13, unincorporated association for Fulton Bank money market. And approve Resolution 2017-14, unincorporated association Fulton Bank checking accounts. If we could make a motion for both.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Under new business, we have, I will turn this over to Councilmember Flanagan.
Thank you. Actually, I want to table the discussion and appropriation of funds for the tree maintenance in Marywood Park, but we have a more pressing issue. Since we made it a dog-friendly park, we need to go ahead and put in the poles with the disposal bags now that we will be having families using the park with their dogs. So I would like to make that discussion and potential, ask for the appropriation. I talked to Mr. Sokolaski and he'll be able to work that into their schedule.
Do we have a dollar?
Do we currently have the equipment or do we have to purchase the equipment? Is that part of? Mr. Sokolaski, if you could come forward.
We have to purchase the containers and the bags. So the, I think for containers and the bags, one unit costs about $360, but there's 10 cases of bags, which each container. So we're probably looking at 100 and for, to do that entire park, we're probably looking at in the area of $650 to $700 with the poles that we have to put in. Somewhere in that area.
And when?
Is that for two?
I'm sorry.
Is that for two?
No, it's gonna, that parks, we probably should put more than two in there in several locations based on what I already see going on there. So we're probably looking at four to five to put in there. And then with the bags, we would use the same bags that we're using at the other dog parks, the one that we're gonna have at Haynes and the one that we're doing down along the river. And then the, and the containers will be the same, the same keys, the same type, the same bags, so everything will be the same.
Containers are for disposal or containers are for storing the bags?
Storing the bags.
So disposal will go into existing trash containers?
Yes, which will be addressed. New ones will be addressed in the 2018 budget.
Okay.
Isn't there an option to have the one that contains the bags and have the basket right next to it so you have it? It's actually a good idea.
We do. It's built, that is, that is one unit, but since we didn't do that at the other dog parks, we would have to buy special bags for those containers. So at this point, we would rather buy larger containers, put them throughout the parks, but they're considerably more money. That's why we'll do it as a 218 budget rather than having those small ones. Those small ones, people will use for everything, so somebody's gonna have to stand by.
That makes sense.
And deal with it. So yeah, if you fill them up with one bag and it'll be, it'll be it. So I don't think it's a good idea for a park that we're gonna be looking at every other day.
Right.
So I think the 218 budget, we're planning on looking at garbage cans and things like that for the entire borough, including the parks, and it'll be addressed at that point.
Will we need to put additional waste containers in the park now?
Probably to address those, we do have two that were removed from another site. The large ones that you see around town, they're blue in color and black in color. I believe they're a little unsightly, so we're trying to slowly eliminate those, but we may have to use them supplementary for now.
For the trash can. Are you talking about Gavin Arce trash can?
No, I'm talking, the new ones that we're looking at?
Yeah.
The new ones that we're looking at are similar to what you see on Fayette Street, the heavy-duty inside that are embedded in concrete that you can't easily move, those type throughout the, throughout the borough. We also are looking at a program with the same type of trash cans that they have in Philadelphia, the Big Belly, the ones that are solar-powered, they act as compacters also. So we've been talking to them on numerous occasions. We're setting something up again to have them come out and discuss trying to trade, to switch over to the entire borough. I think myself and Stephanie have put that off now until, until probably August, but that will be something forthcoming. We'll show you a display of it. There's several locations. I believe Westchester has them. They just did the entire city of New York with them. They have everything from wifi in them that you can run your wifi computer off of it, all the way up to advertising, so you could actually sell advertising on the side of it. It might be something that we will be interested in if the numbers were right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ray.
All right.
So we need a motion?
So, I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
What's, so we need to just clarify what that motion is?
To authorize funds.
To authorize appropriation for the poles for the dog disposal.
Okay.
And the bags.
Can I second?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion and second for the dog park. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Last item that I'm just going to add under new business is the notification to the public about the launch of the Borough App and Councilmember Sokolaski, if you'd like to just kick off that topic.
Sure, so I'm very excited. This has been a long-awaited project and I just want to thank the Borough administrative team that was able to actually get this up and running, but we have, we now have an app that is available to us. So instead of needing to go into the Borough website, this app links us to the Borough website and I've been playing with it for several months in the beta site and I actually find things better on the app than I do in the website, so I think the public will be very excited about that as well. So Kate, I think you know this app inside and out and I'm gonna hand over the mic to you.
Oh, thank you. So yeah, as Ms. Sokolaski has said, the Borough of Conshohocken mobile app is now live and you can download it on your iPhone, your iPad and Android devices. You can also download the app or you can download the app through the App Store, Google Play, and the way you would do it is just search Conshohocken and it's available there just for free for download. Some of the functions or features of the app include accessing news, updates, information about events, you can access forms and permits, you can also register for programs, you can report a concern, and you can do all this directly from your phone. So we do have a flyer here that is available, so if anyone wants extra information, they can access that flyer at the Borough offices and also at the community center, and then we have all the information as well on the Borough website. Do you have any other question?
No, thank you. And I just want to remind and reiterate that all of our activities and things going on in the borough are on our website, so please use our website for information as source information for the borough. We are putting a lot of energy and effort into keeping it up to date and interactive, so I'm excited about, I'm very excited about that.
And I just did it. There you go. That's how easy it is.
Thank you, Kate. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have no other business.
Can we have some public comment, please? Any public comment?
John Costello, what I want to ask is if someone could check on Cherry Street, as you're traveling from Washington Street to East Elm Street, as you're crossing the bike path, the growth there, you can't see anybody coming on your left. It has to be at least six feet high. I don't know whether the county owns it because of the bike path or the railroad, or SEPTA owns it because it's right there, but if you travel from Washington Street, come up to East Elm Street, just look to your left as you're going across the bike path, they'll see exactly what I'm saying. It needs to be trimmed down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? I don't believe this. Okay, council people, mayor?
Yeah, two quick things. Maybe scheduled already or the police usually handle. Do we have any shredding events coming up?
We did have a shredding event in the past, I think it was about two months ago. We don't have one scheduled in the near future, but if you have a request for one, it's just a matter of putting a phone call in to have one coming into the fall.
Probably.
Okay. Yeah, we try, we're trying to do it biannually now. Pretty good response.
Can I have a resident ask about the spraying for mosquitoes at Suck Cliff Park?
Ray, do you know anything about that or Paul?
I'll be doing that this year.
What are we doing?
When's that scheduled for, Ray?
Every single month we do it. This month, we usually put signs throughout the park and we actually do them in all the parks. Chemical exterminating does it. We have what's referred to as cut sheets of all the chemicals we use. We have them in-house and everybody, anybody who requests it, we send them out. In fact, I just had somebody from Suck Cliff Lane ask the same question and we send it out to her because she had her grandkids in the park. She wanted to know what they were, so what it was.
Residents can not opt out?
Opt out to having that done?
Near their yard, near their.
Well, it's, it's a perimeter spray, so if you know how Suck Cliff Park, it's laid out, it's the easiest one to talk about, basically along the path and along the perimeter where there's a large amount of trees, the spray that they use goes up to 13, 14 feet high and it's specifically for the mosquito infestations that, or the mosquito issues that have been going on in the country. He's very adamant about the fact, everybody's very adamant about the fact that we should be doing it because of the amount of people there are and the close proximity of those people to those wooded areas where mosquitoes are gonna cause a problem. Now, I know the county comes in and they were, they were just there, I think three weeks ago where they were actually doing some, they were taking some samples and we'll find out, we usually find out through an email that they have found the problem. Last year, I think Mary Wood, they found a couple of mosquitoes with issues. Suck Cliff, they have not. And Haynes, we have, we do. Haynes is another problem in itself because of, you know, the layout, the back of Haynes is basically a muddy mess and there's a lot of mosquito infiltration there. So he actually goes over the bank and sprays the entire area to keep them back away as far as he can, but there's, you can't opt out. I mean, if there's gonna be an issue and there's gonna be a medical issue, I think that we're probably gonna, they're gonna have to notify us or contact us and then we'll have to discuss it with the appropriate people, but right now, I don't know, I don't know many municipalities that aren't having some type of program when they have parks the size of we do, that we do in the close proximity of wooded areas.
You say once a month, July or August?
No, we're actually start, it starts in, May is the worst period of time, but the best period of time to start it, so he starts in late May, it'll go all the way up until September. For the 4th of July event, for instance, we had to move it back, so we're doing it the Friday prior to the 3rd of July fireworks, so he's gonna get it done. He's usually there, he has to wait till the morning dew comes off of the trees, so he's usually there about nine o'clock and those parks, maybe two or three o'clock in the afternoon.
Do we have those chemical reports on file?
Yes, I have them all. Yeah, I have them all, he has them, and I, like I say, I've provided them.
I'll check with him. Maybe the same resident that's also in there too.
Yeah, I've provided them to several residents. They're called, he refers to them as cut sheets. It's a detail of exactly what the chemical does and any kind of reactions that could be expected if there is an issue.
Ray, what about the basin at Suck Cliff?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Do you do the basin at Suck Cliff also? Or is that?
He does. He, it's done with a very large vehicle, so there's limitations as to where it can go. As we look into this in the future, we have someone on staff who has the certifications to actually use those chemicals. So we have the, what I refer to as the Gator, the four-wheel-drive little truck that you see. We're actually gonna look to buy a tank for that and some of those other locations, we're gonna be able to do with that. He's not, he can't get into those locations. And then we haven't started Marywood Park yet. That again is gonna be a topic of conversation at some point.
Ray, is the, are the meadows included?
Yeah, they will be.
As I know before, historically it was considered Montgomery County's.
Yes, but because of the close proximity of the wooded area and that backs up to the Haynes Park issue. It's the same waterway that runs through, so he has done it in the past, he will be doing it this year. Because of the closeness of the park equipment to where the trees are, we hadn't, we haven't done it to this point, but we're gonna talk about that in the next couple of weeks and how he's gonna address that. That he might have to do, walk it by hand and not use the truck.
Right, okay.
But yes, I am not aware of any municipalities in our area that are not, that don't have some type of program. Montgomery County has the program where they go through the streets, you hear the whistling truck and, you know, they go through the streets and do it, but this is specifically for our parks and wooded areas.
So speaking of mosquitoes and basins, there is a large pit down by the railroad tracks that with all of this rain, it looks like a lake, and we do have residents that are asking about stagnant water in that area and what can be done about that, and it looks like it's in the process of being constructed or abandoned or whatever they're doing down there.
That's 51.
Yes, 51 Washington, but the water that will sit there during the heat is problematic.
We also have that concern about that little trench that runs along the railroad tracks because water lays in there also.
So.
Mr. Hughes is coming.
Paul can fill us in, but we have, just so council's aware and everybody else, because I expect it will start to move forward, we actually held a staff meeting with Roseland who bought that development from Mr. O'Neil. We are working on cleaning up some final details to the parking lot design with SEPTA. They, we have finalized development agreements. I expect they're gonna want to try to get moving on the actual site work soon. What they've done so far has been demolition work that was all done pursuant to a demolition permit. They had an escrow posted, so Paul can.
They started with demolition work and they ran into some environmental issues with the previous uses on the site. That's the genesis of the large pit that's out there was they had to remove a lot of material that was hazardous.
Contaminated.
They're done with that work now. I spoke with the development director today and they are hoping to now start to expedite getting the final plans ready for a final review and getting the land development plan signed.
tracks that with all of this rain, it looks like a lake. And we do have residents that are asking about stagnant water in that area and what can be done about that. And it looks like it's in the process of being constructed or abandoned or whatever they're doing down there.
That's Fifty-One.
Yes, Fifty-One Washington. But the water that will sit there during the heat is problematic.
We also have that concern about that little trench that runs along the railroad tracks because water lays in there also.
So, Mr. Hughes is coming.
Paul can fill us in, but we have, just so council's aware and everybody else, because I expect it will start to move forward, we actually held a staff meeting with Roseland who bought that development from Mr. O'Neill. We are working on cleaning up some final details to the parking lot design with SEPTA. They, we have finalized development agreements. I expect they're going to want to try to get moving on the actual site work soon. What they've done so far has been demolition work that was all done pursuant to a demolition permit. They had an escrow posted, so Paul can.
They started with demolition work and they ran into some environmental issues with the previous uses on the site. That's the genesis of the large pit that's out there was they had to remove a lot of material that was hazardous.
Contaminated.
They're done with that work now. I spoke with the development director today, and they are hoping to now start to expedite getting the final plans ready for a final review and getting the land development plan signed all fallen and so forth.
And are they refilling the hole?
Yeah, well, that hole is going to be.
A building?
I'm not sure exactly where it falls, but a combination of, a combination of building road and SEPTA's parking lot, I think somewhere depending upon where it falls. Yeah, so I guess the question's going to become is if there's any further delays, if we need to have them tend to that area in some intermittent fashion. Like, for instance, on a much smaller scale, I got a call about the roadway that goes through there and having some repairs done because there's some stone and some potholes and some things. So the everyday users are not terribly comfortable using that roadway. Of course, as you might imagine, the developer's hoping that if they can get their approvals and get going, that they can do those, do that work once rather than come in, spend money to repair it, and then come back and then reconstruct it. But that's not really our concern, is to make sure that everyone's comfortable. So that's one thing I'm working on is that, if we need to have a bigger conversation about that, that stagnant water and those kind of environmental issues.
It's a health risk, especially with West Nile and all the.
Advisable, I think you need to talk to them about getting that site drained.
Yeah. All right, I'll make that call tomorrow.
Thanks.
Paul?
Good, thank you, Paul. Well, now, is SEPTA building their garage at the same time they're working on their property? How's that working out?
SEPTA's not building a garage yet. What we, if you recall, what was approved as a part of that building was the construction of a parking lot for SEPTA, sixty-odd spaces depending on the configuration. And there's a lot of engineering that goes into fitting a parking lot like that next to the tracks. But that is still on the plan. We've been working on wiggling around the location of the relocated Washington Street. Literally, that was one of the things we discussed at the staff meeting last week was finalizing that location, SEPTA getting their engineers to sign off on, not the train engineers, but their site engineers to sign off on the location of that parking lot and the road. When we get over that final approval on the SEPTA side, which I would expect would happen at SEPTA's board meeting next month, because they, we have to swap some property with SEPTA, and it's complicated, but there's one last hurdle to get over. In the construction sequence, once the site work actually begins, the, Roseland, the developer, will actually be building the parking lot. And that's in the front end of their construction sequence along with the site work. So they'll be doing their grading and ENS control measures, they'll go in and grade the parking lot, do the subsurface, do the base coat, not top coat it and finish it until they're done, but they'll construct that parking lot first because they're giving SEPTA temporary parking on the site where their building's going to go. So they need to get SEPTA back off of that and into their parking lot so that they can start to build the building. So we've timed it out so it'll all be done on the front end of the project, and hopefully we'll have that, I would hope we'd have that parking lot built well before winter.
And the train station soon after?
Train station is still in discussion with the property owners. That, the station's proposed to be relocated about six hundred feet down the track toward the, toward the west. And we're still in very preliminary discussions with the property owner who has to agree and figure out what they're developing there in order to accommodate the construction of the station and the garage and the site layout. So we, the good thing is that, I was just telling somebody this the other day, SEPTA has done a complete one-eighty with respect to their approach to how they're dealing with these issues. For years, they're sort of banging on the door and could get no response, no interest, no, nothing from SEPTA. It's been a marked change over the last year. They're, they've put this in their capital budget, they have money allocated for it, it's a high priority, and they actually call us now to follow up and to do things. So I'm guardedly optimistic after a lot of years that we should be able to get that project off the ground in the next year or two.
So I want to stay connected with the Comprehensive Plan Task Force because one of the things that we're looking at is how do you connect the train station and the train area to town? Because right now, there's not an easy way to get to it. So we want to make sure that whatever's being talked about is connected with the Comprehensive Plan.
I can tell you, and again, this is all very preliminary, but the initial sketch that SEPTA gave to the Borough would propose a new crossing at Oak Street. Because from their estimation, trying to channel all that traffic down Washington, it's just not viable, and it's not practical. So they are proposing that we consider getting a crossing there at Oak Street. Now, that's not as easy as it sounds. You have to go through the Pennsylvania Public Utilities Commission and get approval for that, for whatever reason, they control road crossings over railroad tracks. So there's a lot of work that would go into that, but having SEPTA come up with the idea is good because they initially have to agree before any of it can go anywhere. So they have been at least thoughtful about how do we connect this to town and how do we make it easier for people to get in and get out. What we can do from this point forward is just make sure that Stephanie, whenever we have any sort of discussions or anything with SEPTA, we can get you meeting minutes, and that way you guys can be up to date in real time about what's going on.
We also had an engineering meeting with the PUC and SEPTA and the Sewer Authority. They kind of wanted to meet with us to look specifically at that at-grade crossing and go over the technical issues. So that was a few months ago, so presumably they've been working on engineering that design.
Thank you, Paul. Got anything, Colin?
Three to five, three to five.
I've got a couple things. Couple things, I said.
No, no.
I just want to thank, we had a little get-together for the Suck Cliff Park, the opening of the new playground a couple of weeks ago. Some of the neighbors came down, and I'll tell you, it's a beautiful thing down there. I mean, I was down there at seven o'clock this morning, seven-thirty, and there's kids in the park that are early, I mean, using the facility. So it's beautiful down there, and it's, the park looks great, Suck Cliff Park. I'd like to thank Public Works and all the guys, all the hard work they did, they really did a terrific job. And all the parks. It's one of the thank them. And I had a resident ask me if we could speak up at the meetings. They're still not hearing us well. They spoke about somebody on the end over there. Also, we always had a gate at the top of Seventh Avenue, so cars couldn't pull down into the park. And also, we had a chain across Suck Cliff Lane, beginning, going into the park, to the Little League, there's a lot of cars going down there now, loading and unloading, leaving their cars down there. So I think we need to put that gate back up and put the chain back up to stop vehicles from going into the park.
Are you talking at the end of my street?
Seventh Avenue, yeah. We used to have an iron gate up there. It's gone.
Yeah, it's been going for a long time.
Yeah, well, I think we, people are driving down that path.
Regular-sized vehicles.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
The Cut?
Yeah, the Cut.
Steep one.
Yeah. And there were cars going down Suck Cliff Lane path because they want to unload, not at the snack bar, if there's somebody down there, a tournament going on, you know? And it's okay for handicapped people, for them to take them down and drop them off, but they got to bring their cars out again. They can't leave the cars down there. There's too much activity down there. Thursday night, I bet there's a thousand people in that park. You know? So you don't want vehicles driving in the park.
If it's council's wish, then we can internally do some research and get prices on those two items?
Thank you.
We might even still have that gate somewhere.
No, I think it's gone.
Really?
I'm not a hundred percent, Ray. Did you see it around?
They ran into it.
Yeah.
Okay, Jane, you got anything?
Yes, I just wanted to mention, we talked a little bit about the citizens-concerned site on our website, and someone named Emily left a remark, and I've been trying to reach you, Emily. Your phone number and your email are not valid, so we are not ignoring you. If you could either call Ms. Checo or myself, I would like to provide you with an answer. Thank you.
The only question that I had, Ray, is specific to the playground equipment and the stones around there. How are we addressing that?
That's temporary and after Fourth of July we're going to address it. We had the choice of not opening a part for another two weeks and trying to address it, or putting in this temporary measure in order to get the park open, and then after the Thirty-July event, we're looking at either Blacktop, or if you're familiar with the park, the top part of the lot is now EP Henry, they have EP Henry and Blacktop. We have, we have a large count of EP Henrys left, so we might do a mixture of Blacktop and EP Henry to try to address it.
What's the temporary fix?
The temporary fix was the.
Or mud.
Oh, so we have the stone until the end, okay.
That's not.
Kids like this stuff.
They do.
They can throw them. They can like to throw them.
That's why we use the ones that we use, it's a lardine-type vessel, it's completely around, no sharp edges.
Don't hurt, it don't hurt.
We go in there at six o'clock in the morning, we're going off with a regular meat blower.
Is that what I keep hearing?
Doesn't take much. Actually, we've left the room down there, and a lot of the parents take care of the problems.
Oh, that's good. Okay, thank you.
Needham?
Just a huge thank you to the guys. Awesome job, well done.
I just wanted to talk and speak to, I'm getting excited, and Jane can speak to it as well. We're three, three weeks away from having our odor control system up and running at the sewer plant. So we know that with the heat over the last several days, there were some breakthrough days that we had some odor, but both Jane and I have been working with the Sewer Authority, and they changed up chemicals as soon as they got the call, and I think it controlled it by Sunday. So I'm very excited, three weeks away, and odor control is up and running. So thank you, Sewer Authority.
And keep your fingers crossed that no weather prohibits them from continuing.
What, the tropical snort?
Okay.
The one that whizzed through you?
That's it. Thank you.
I got, I got, I got two things. One thing, it's getting hot out there, and most people in country know on Monday that the Borough is a holiday most of the time, and the people pulling their trash out to the curb, and those don't get picked up on Monday, and it stays out there until Thursday. In this kind of weather, you know how it's smelling then? They don't have the courtesy to take it back in the yard or whatever until the, what's it called? Because if your trash don't go on Monday, it don't go until the fallen trash day. So on a Monday, when we have a holiday, you go down to some of the places on a Tuesday, and that trash is out there until Thursday, which is bad, you can smell it and everything now. So I don't know what we're going to do, but I'm going to try to get, Ray, we're going to talk about it, they're going to start getting citations or whatever, because it's getting outrageous the way they leave it out there. That's one thing I want to talk about. And another thing, I was in the market with my wife the other day, and a girl runs up to me, and she's talking to me about trucks going up her street, big trucks, and knocking down her wires and stuff and everything. And I say, yeah, I understand that, but I said, we can't do nothing about it unless you get the license plate or the name of the truck. And believe it or not, she had the license plate, the name of the truck and everything, and I turned it over to the police, and I think they take it care from there, from there on. So I'm asking the residents, if the trucks come up your street that don't belong there, and if you can get their license plate or the name of the truck, write it down, turn it into police, and we'll do something about it, because they do it on a lot of these streets in country with the low wire. They'll go down and knock them all down and just keep going. That's all I got, I got to say, so keep an eye out for it, please. Now, Jane, what do you?
Oh, well, Robert, we want to talk about the Soapbox Derby.
And the fireworks.
And the fireworks, so who would like to?
The fireworks will be on the third. The third will be the fireworks, it'll be down Suck Cliff Park, starts at six-thirty, but the fireworks run to about, what, nine-thirty, ten o'clock?
Nine-thirty.
Okay.
We're going to try to do it earlier. We're going to try to do it a little bit earlier this year. So be prepared around eight-thirty.
And on the fourth.
I know, but just be prepared.
That's on the third, the night of the third. But on the Fourth of July, we still have the Soapbox Derby here on Fiat Street. So we'd like to get people out with a Soapbox Derby and start getting it bigger, like it used to be, or close to it anyway. Let's keep that in mind.
Really fun, all-day event.
Yeah, and keep it in mind. You go down on the fireworks, it's packed down there, but then you go to the Soapbox Derby, and I could run down the street faster than someone could.
So I have a question.
I'd like to see a lot of people come out.
How does a new resident who moved into town with children get involved in the Soapbox Derby, learn how to make a soapbox car and get with the club, or is it a club? I don't know enough about it, so I'm asking the question for people.
Did the committee on that? I forget who did.
Mr. Costello. Yes, John.
Excellent.
The expert.
You're still riding that car, right, John?
Yeah, I'm still involved. The Soapbox Derby is open for children that are seven to twenty-one. The local race director is Mark Marine. If you go on the All-American Soapbox Derby website, that's A-A-A-S-B-D.org, and then look for local race, and look for Concha Hocken, and then you get Mark's contact information.
Just as an overview on that, what will happen while the race takes part or takes place on July Fourth?
Yes.
Months before that, starting usually in February.
Right.
The local Derby Committee will start to host events of their own and invite anybody that's interested to come in. They'll outline the program, how you start, where you get a car from, how you get a sponsor, et cetera, et cetera. And then they have like maybe bi-weekly meetings, monthly meetings, leading up to July Fourth.
Right.
And as you're building your car, if you have any questions whatsoever, come to the meeting, bring your car if you have to, and they'll sort it out for you and show you what to do and correct any problems you may be running into.
Yes, as the mayor said, we start in February. We have a couple registrations, and we try to advertise them as best we can. And then the cars get inspected twice. There's the first inspection where we go over the car and make sure it's up to the current regulations, and then we have a final inspection right before the race where we finalize it, and then we impound the car before the race. That final inspection this year is July first, which thankfully for the Fellowship House is only a couple of days before the Fourth.
So how much is going rate of a car these days, just to get started in the lesser division?
I'm going to say around five hundred dollars, but they're, and that sounds like a huge number, but that's all-inclusive. That would include painting, decals, anything you put on it. There's three divisions, so like a child that's seven would not be racing against somebody that's twenty-one. You won't have to worry about that. There's a stock division, super stock, and a masters division, which from what I understand, we are going to have this year. We have six cars.
A lot of times the sponsor will pick up the.
A lot of times the sponsor will pick up the cost of the car. There are other cars in town that the committee knows about that are available, so if your child's unsure about it, we could get one of those cars for you and connect you, and then your child can try in one of those cars to race in it.
And is this a traveling club? So are we the start of the season, or are we the middle of the season?
Actually, we are the last race in the country. And because the All-American Race, the national race, is held the third week in July, every year we have to apply for a special exemption because the last race officially has to be sometime in June, that all the cars can get out to Akron, Ohio and be inspected.
Great, well, thank you for that information. That was good information for me, and anybody out there who's interested, please reach out to the mayor or Mr. Costello, and they, we can get you more information, because wouldn't it be exciting if we really did have a lot of cars?
Yes, the last I heard, we had thirty cars this year.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Any more public comment? With that, I will say, oh, that guy wants to talk.
I had a couple things I want to talk about, quick. I think now, after all that's going on, we have this new advertiser out front.
Can you just state your name and your address? Can you state your name and your address?
Joe Malzita.
Thank you.
Wood Street. And what you've been advertising is the Soapbox Derby, fireworks, and the concert series. I think if we made better use of it, the Soapbox Derby, you could put up there in February, if anybody's interested, days off for the Borough, advertise so the Borough can know. Your task force, let, most people don't know about the app or go to the website. Advertise that, maybe the younger generation will, they want to get involved in the Borough a little bit more, because now that you said last meeting, twenty-five to thirty-four is the growing number, we have to do whatever it takes to incorporate them in the Borough.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
I have more information.
And. And any ideas like that for communication for our borough, please do not hesitate to reach out to any of us, because we're really trying hard to get that information out as much as we can.
I think also, just to remind everyone, we also have the TV channel, so we're also using that as a medium for information to get out to the public. So if you don't have a computer, but you do have TV, we're just, you know, trying to get all the different avenues that are available. It's Comcast and Verizon, the...
Verizon 22.
Verizon 22.
Okay. Any more public comment? With that, I'd like to thank everybody for coming, keep coming. We'd like to see you here, and let us know what's going on in the borough. You help us out a lot. So with that, I would say, meetings adjourned.